I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order. 7:00 PM, March 2nd, 2016. First item is adoption of the minutes from February 3rd.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes?
I believe that our board is in need of a secretary in order to approve minutes.
Oh!
I make a motion that we make nominations for a replacement secretary for our board.
And before we even do that, shall we introduce ourselves for the record?
Oh, my name is Darrell Wilson.
Barbara Higginbar.
Jonathan.
Mike Howey.
Roger Sard.
And Ms. Higginbar will be voting this evening. She is an alternate and we are missing a member, a full member. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Wilson?
I make a motion that we open the floor for nominations for Secretary of the Board.
Does someone volunteer to be nominated?
What are the duties of secretary?
Essentially, to look at the minutes that are prepared, they're all done, and then say, "Yeah, okay, it's silent." I think I can do that. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mike as our secretary.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Howey. Congratulations, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I explain, do you want to explain why there was a need to elect a secretary?
Ah.
Because this is not just for the purpose of this meeting.
Right. Our secretary has moved away and is no longer a member of the planning board. So, we needed to have a secretary.
So, his resignation is going to be presented to the council at the next meeting, but that does not take away your ability to get a secretary in the meantime? So, it's all good.
Okay. Now, shall we go on to adoption of the minutes from February 3rd? Is someone prepared to make a motion regarding the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes as written with a revision to change the secretary's name signature block.
Dan? Is there any discussion or any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please. Minutes are adopted. Next item of business is final plan for a major use site development and major subdivision entitled Stone Park Properties. Proposal is construct a nine-unit apartment building on an 8.9 acre property at 431 Bangor Road, Tax Net 58, Lot 19-3 in the urban zone. Is someone representing the applicant?
Andrew McCullough representing Stone Park Properties and John Bates. At the last meeting, when the application was essentially deemed complete, there was a request for a couple items, as well as at the TRT meeting. And though those items included a road, no, we included the road profile at the last meeting. Those items included a detail, a better detail of the buffer adjacent to the residence next door. It also included clarification on the request for the lighting waiver. And also, when Mike Hangey was reviewing the letter that he had prepared, he made a slight revision to it, or clarification to it, and so we included the revised letter that he prepared regarding the, his review from the standpoint of fire inspector.
Any questions from the board for the applicant?
I do have questions about the lighting waiver.
Okay.
So, the waiver appears to be for an average maximum, and...
The biggest difference between the plan and the ordinance is, one is the lighting at the active entrance. The lighting at the active entrance is just under two-foot candles, and which is what the recommendation is in the dark sky societies standards. But the ordinance has, I believe, a minimum of five and a maximum of 12 at the active entrance. But there's no, there are several reasons why I would request that waiver. One is, this is, it's multifamily, but it's residential versus a commercial-type business where that active entrance needs to be, or understandably needs to be bright. And I don't want to, I don't want to take away from the residential character of the entire area by having a foot candle level that is more typical of, or might be more accepted at a commercial versus a residential site. So, that is my main reason for the waiver. The other thing I will state is that, you know, like in the parking lot, we meet the maximum, we meet the minimum, but the, we don't quite meet the average maximum. So, it is very difficult, frankly, to come up with a plan where we meet all three of those standards at the same time. If you look at the minimum and the maximum, and then the average maximum, we've got a maximum at any point of four, and then we go to an average maximum of .5. With typical fixtures, it's very hard to meet. What I did look at, just to try to give you a little bit more background, is I looked at the standards for max-min ratios, which is not something in our ordinance. And when you look at max-min ratios, the acceptable in a, I won't say a lighting ordinance, but in a lighting standard that I reviewed, or recommended lighting standard, was 20. And then, they said that if it was a, if there was an enhanced level of safety required, they recommended 15. So, we're even, we're at a quote-unquote "enhanced" level of safety with our max-min And yet, again, we don't meet the, there's so many maximens, and we don't meet the average maximum. So, the other thing that I looked at today is, I looked at the average and the variation between the maximum and the average, or the variation between the maximum and the minimum. Because the more contrast, then the harder it is for someone to adjust. So, at the front walk, the average is 1.44, and the max is 1.8, the minimum is 1.9. So, the variation is, the overall variation is one foot candle, or the typical variation, if you went between the average and the max, is a half foot candle, which is not very significant. So, I see that as being positive. And in the parking lot, we have a, between the average and the maximum, or the average and the minimum, we have a one-foot candle variation. So, we have a little bit more variation, which would be more typical. So, personally, I don't see it as a safety hazard here. In a residential setting versus a more commercialized setting, to have a lower max, where we still meet the standards at the property lines, we still provide a reasonable or recommended by the Dark Sky Society standard at the doorways. We also have added, or not added, we included in the plan, lighting along the back of the building, so that secondary means of egress does have lighting also. So, there is a level of safety there that's provided in the plan.
Okay, thank you for that. My position about lighting in this case for this board is that we wrote an ordinance and put together some numbers, and as a board member, I'm pretty confident that if we meet those numbers, we meet the requirements for safety, and that we meet the requirements for dark sky. Because the last thing I want to do is overlay stuff, so, you know, there's these competing standards in my mind about how do you keep the light where you need it and not light up all of Ellsworth and the cumulative effect of all the projects, versus, you know, there has to be enough lighting there to meet the standards. I mean, to meet the safety requirement for whoever's going to use the area. So, I feel like the numbers in the ordinance, if we meet those, I have no question, it's going to be safe, and it's going to meet the dark sky initiative. Where I get into trouble is when we step outside those batteries, and you present alternate numbers with alternate reasonings, and it's not clear to me if those alternate numbers are also safe and meet dark sky initiatives. I don't have anything to base that on, other than your testimony.
Right.
And I feel like in some cases, sort of the epiphany I've come to, it's, the burden of proof is on you to convince us that yes, it's safe, and that it meets these initiatives. I really don't know how to calculate average max or max-min ratios, so it's not clear to me if I can even, like, properly address the fact that you don't meet a max-min, you know, is that okay or is that not okay? We have spent a fair amount of time talking about this. I did receive some training through Hancock County, where I watched a bunch of presentations, like you mentioned, about contrast. So, some of the reasonings I get. And then, specifically because we had sort of challenges to this ordinance since it's been written, I spent an afternoon sitting with the guy who wrote the recommendations for the lighting, and I asked him some of these point-blank questions, and he was very adamant about the numbers that were in the ordinance and how we should be meeting those, and if we don't, you know, there's potentially issues with those. So, I feel like in some ways, I become a proxy for your requests versus, you know, his recommendations. And, you know, I really hate to just, I understand what you're saying about the fact that it's a different setting, and a lighting waiver might be appropriate here, but the more we go down this road, the further I'm out of my comfort zone. And I feel like maybe I just need to push that back on you and say, "Convince me, show me more data. I'm thinking about other conditions that I'm going to force on the city about this." Like, for example, if we install this lighting plan like this, in six or eight months, once everything's up and running, I'm going to go one out and do a field measurement of that whole area with your permission, with the applicant's permission, to try and learn more about, you know, what this really means.
Right.
And what does it look like? I'd like the city, you know, to take some action to sort of either open up the lighting requirements, force a dialogue, you know, that helps rewrite these in some way, because granting waivers all the time is just becoming more and more problematic. And maybe what I do today, because I'm kind of bull guarding the agenda here, is maybe I just sit back and let the board decide whether this waiver is important or not, and I'll abide by whatever decision they make. If we vote to approve the waiver, then I'm comfortable going forward with the project.
My question, Mr. Chairman, is what needs to be, what needs to be done to actually meet the standard? Is it just the cost of adding one pole? So, the question is, what needs to be done to meet the standard?
Well, I, can I answer one question first?
Sure, and I'm sorry to just go off on a tangent like that.
No, 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 that's fine. They, and I know exactly what you're saying, and that's why I had included, I think it's a five-page brochure, or five-page document from Guidelines for Good Exterior Lighting Plans, prepared by the Dark Sky Society. And on the last page of that, it talks about active building entrance average, not to exceed approach.
Could you help me find that?
Sure. It's in, it's in my Lightings, and let's see what exhibit it is, Exhibit 10, Lighting and Buffering, it's the last page of that.
I'll see the cut sheets. Exhibit 10. Maybe I don't have that dialogue. Mine jumps to Exhibit 11.
Okay. Well, here's the last page. So, that, this is what, this is what I was basing part of my plan on.
It was my understanding from before, is this from the Dark Sky Initiative?
Yeah.
It's my understanding that their approach to lighting, and maybe I'm misunderstanding it, they had like an overall budget of numbers that accumulated, not just these zones that had to be within a certain range. They gave an area like an overall budget, limits of illumination, measuring the foot candles, active building approach, not to exceed, average two, gas station approach.
The standards that we have are based on the Dark Sky also, and the gentleman that helped us with it is very active, and he's like, you know, he's received training and involved with the Dark Sky Society.
So, this sort of, this is different than our standards, what you're telling me? Active building entrance is where you're...
It is, yes.
Not to exceed five-foot candle, and it should average two. And our ordinance is more than five? Is that right?
Yeah.
For active entrances, do you mean? Is this for any zone, for any use? Do they distinguish between commercial and residential in there?
They obviously do not believe so.
Because, and that's part of the argument that you're making here, and you've made it before, is that it may not be appropriate in this setting to light to commercial standards. How did, so how do you justify that? Where do you get that from? Is that just a feeling? Is it like a divine goal of yours, or...
I have measured lighting.
Yeah, see, that's where I have a disadvantage. I have no reference for this.
Right. I mean, I have literally gone out and measured lighting, with a lighting meter. And so, that's why I stated, I went out about the beginning of January, on a pitch-black night, no moon, and I measured underneath one of our streetlights here on State Street. Stood directly underneath it, and it was .9 foot candles. That was directly underneath it. So, I'm saying, okay, I've got double, I'm putting double that at the active building entrance. And, I mean, frankly, I mean, I, you know, I can tell you that I can see pretty well under a, under a, directly under a, under a street lamp in Ellsworth, directly underneath it. And so, I say double it, and I can see very well.
Right.
So, that's, I mean, that's why I stated that in my, you know, in my letter, and just to try to give a better visual.
Was that a Cobra light?
Cobra light.
One of those big Cobra light?
Yep.
And so, you were in the street, therefore?
Mm-hmm.
You went into the street under the...
One thing I'm struggling with, struggling with thinking is, there's no way to measure in a residential setting, this, all these standards do not take into account the nine apartments that during those hours will have lights on. So, I mean, it's, in my mind, it's a mute point. In a commercial setting, typically, those businesses don't light as well as a residential setting. So, I mean, not only do you have the lighting for this facility, but it's also the internal light that will be, quote, coming, spilling out. So, and I don't think there's any way an applicant can measure that. So, he basically has to negate that. But that's something I'm struggling with, is like, that, when the project's done, that will be an impact. I think it will be well done, but there's no, I don't think there's any way you can measure that.
No, they're, not with the software. I mean, I was, I was working with the software again today, and no, you can't.
But I'm just, common sense is recognizing that will be a factor.
So, what's worth, I think that the ordinance was created to, when we talk about commercial versus residential, I think the idea is when you have a multi-unit apartment, you have several people living there. You have, it's not your house, it's not necessarily your kids. People come in and out, some people are respectful of the environment they're traveling through, some people are less respectful. The important thing there, I think, is that it's lit sufficiently, so if that you, you're, you know, your headlights of your car are not providing adequate lighting because it's on the site, it needs, the people or kids that are there need to be able to be visible. So, that's one thing, that all these lighting is 100% full cutoff, so there is no dark sky issue because it is not going on. The other thing that I want to say is that the contrast, as Darrell has mentioned, the idea between average, I mean, maximum and minimum, is that people think that, oh, in the old times, they would think that they need to eliminate their sight very highly for safety purposes. Well, the idea that, when you go from very high illumination to no illumination, that complete contrast is where you have safety issue because your eyes cannot acclimatize and see. So, that's the idea, is where we have some maximum and we have some minimum, to have these differences graduated. So, the idea here is that full cutoff should not have an impact on the night sky, and that the idea is that when you have an apartment building, you have people that are coming in and out, and you have no control from your neighbor heads, and you have kids.
And, well, I mean, back to that, I understand what you're saying between that if there's a significant contrast, there are issues with adjustment. And so, you know, we go with, we have very little contrast, where we have an average maximum that ranges between 1.2 and 1.8. So, I mean, there's very little contrast between each of them, which would seem to me to be a pretty easy adjustment to make. So, I mean, the answer is, I can, I can add another fixture at each doorway, I can add a wall pack at each doorway that will bring it up to, so each doorway will be at over five foot candles. And so, it will be, it will be less than the maximum, it will be at or above the minimum, and it will meet, so it will meet the standard.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's feasible. I'm not, I mean, I can't argue that it's not feasible, okay, to do that.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. It's not like it's unachievable.
So, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna beat you to death, I mean, you know that by now, over, but, because it is achievable. Personally, based on what I have seen, what I've measured, what I've read, that this is my position. But if, but it's doable, and if we need to do that, we will.
Now, Darrell, you mentioned you'd like to go out there with a meeting.
I would. And I, we've tried to arrange this before, but, you know, it differs when you have to do this.
Well, you've got to pick the right nights, you've got to pick the right, you know, honestly...
And, I mean, we tried to involve city staff, and weather plays into its schedules.
Yeah.
So, we've talked about it.
We're gonna write that down in this little sheet.
So, if we get to a waiver, Andrew?
So if we gave you a waiver, Andrew, and then did what you want to do, we went out and measured it, and we didn't like the results, you could make those changes after the fact? Or would it be too much money or too much time or what?
I don't know.
No, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to do that because, I mean, we've, then we're putting hole, then we're trying to, if the wires aren't there, if the holes aren't there, if the, if everything's not, if the switches aren't there, then that just doesn't work. So, I mean, for this type of application.
So if we gave them the waiver, at least we could find out for ourselves if the standard's within reason.
That was part of my thinking, was, okay.
And make us feel better about it.
He installs, we go out and view, we take whatever we think we know about lighting out to that, and, you know, have somebody stand over here, can I identify you? Is there too much contrast? Can I drop my keys on the ground and find them? Can I, you know, pull in with a car, or back up with a car and see? I mean, I don't know what else to do to get the kind of experience that makes me feel comfortable with saying, this is safe or not safe. And maybe, maybe I shouldn't even be doing that. I mean, I'm a citizen of Ellsworth, I'm a planning board member, I don't know how to calculate lighting. I know what I've been told, and I'm just trying to give some reference for you because I know this is gonna, you know, I hate to stop a project like this over something like this.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, and that's frankly why I did additional research and looked into it, tried to look into it more and said, you know, okay, I'm not gonna, again, I'm not gonna stop this project because, just because we won't install an additional nine fixtures. I mean, that's, that's not reasonable, Daryl.
And I think, I guess what I'd like to do is get enough evidence from you, enough reasoning and logic, so that I can go to the council and say, "Look, you need to look at what you've written here. Here's compelling reasons why this doesn't work." Or, you know, in this, in this setting, like, this isn't flexible enough, or it's not, like, there's a lot of exceptions to it. So I think, part of what I want is that data that supports your position, so that I can take it to other people to be scrutinized.
Right.
I'd like to see some application to the question at hand from this application. I think there may be other residential settings that are in place now that we can accomplish the same thing and measure light, if that landowner is willing to do it. I think it's unfair to this particular applicant to set city standard and hold up their project.
Yeah, that's the other thing, too.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna, right.
I don't want to set conditions on your approval-
Right.
-that involve the city, but I'm gonna set some conditions on the city regardless because I just think that we need a better way to resolve these.
Well, again, and that's why I say, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna dig my heels in because, yeah, with this fixture, which is, you know, a Cree LED wall mount light for security, entryways, stairways, storage, perimeter lighting, ideal for residential exteriors, typical mounting height, eight feet. You know, it's about a $75 fixture. That, again, that will give more than five foot candles, that'll bring it right up. That'll bring it right up to the city standard.
If you double those up at the entrances, is that what you're saying?
Just one at each entrance.
So, so what's there now? A fixture with less output?
There, there's a fixture mounted up higher, up at, up at 12 feet, I believe, it says on the plan.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that, okay.
Yes.
So you're talking about supplementing that with those?
Yes, I would have to supplement it. So, I mean, we can do that, and it's done. The, the other thing I looked at today is, is, again, I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna profess to be a lighting expert. I did review, and there is an ordinance, model ordinance, on the Dark Sky Society, through the Dark Sky Society, updated or redone within the last year. And it breaks down these zones as far as residential. You know, there's like six different zones broken down in it. And one is agricultural and rural areas. And then the second is residential, and then, you know, you increase right up to your city core.
So there is, there is a commercial sort of block to that?
Yeah, yeah. And so it, it has a, it has a much more defined, it much more defines different areas, different uses, and then suitable standards for each of those.
And you're, and you're looking at that, how does that really compare against this? If you were gonna take the ordinance that we have written in for like the rural area?
It's pretty different. It's quite different.
The range, the range of lighting that's allowed in that model ordinance is more variable than what you see here? The intensity levels overall are higher or lower?
A lot lower. I mean, like, like in this residential area, like this type of application. But, I mean, again, it's a 44-page document, Daryl, and, and I, you know, I took, let's say, two and a half or three hours today to try to work my way through as much additional data that, beyond what I already had. And, and so, I mean, I can only state that it's, it's different, it's lower.
But they, they assert that it supports safety and security.
Yes, that's, I mean, that's what they assert, yes. So I mean, I'm just basing it on what I've read to date and what I've observed. But, again, I mean, I don't, really, I don't want to belabor the point too, too long here, tonight.
Okay.
You know, again.
Would you, if you were to adopt that model ordinance to this plan, would you meet those criteria of their ordinance?
Yeah, I feel that we would, but.
Question?
Yes.
In all our discussions so far, we've assumed that the person making use of the lighting has normal vision. Suppose you had a person who is not able to see well under the lighting conditions, so sensitivity to the light is not as good. Which would then argue for the higher-
And what?
Illumination. So between, between that and dark skies, you have a tension between safety and environment. It looks like our ordinance is looking at safety. The weight is going there. Do you know if the ADA addresses this, Americans with Disabilities Act?
The... I can't. I reviewed ADA standards today, and I can't dogmatically say, but I do not believe that there was anything in there that, that made me stumble. The other thing that I, I think, but I'm not going to, I think you are, I think you are right in saying, or maybe you're not saying, that there's a balance somewhere between maximum provision for safety and maximum provision for environmental standards.
There seems to be a tension.
Yeah. I'm not gonna argue with you there either, because I think there's, and maybe that balance is somewhere in between.
So if we're going to suggest changes to the lighting standards, I think you have to have that tension resolved in some way.
So I don't know that we're gonna resolve that one.
We're not gonna resolve it tonight.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just, I come back to my position that, you know, if I read the ordinance and it fits the ordinance, it meets those criteria. That tension is resolved for me. It's when we-
No, just in changing it comes into play, and it doesn't come into play right now.
Oh, this is the, and I don't have the problems tonight. This is the fixture. It's a wall pack fixture. And that's a blow-up of it. That's a very small scale.
And that's a, that's a full cutoff fixture?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can the city comment on, on, in defense of their ordinance and whether or not we should be entertaining more waivers to it?
Well, I'd like to say that when Andrew was asked, what does it take? It's just a bit more money to meet it. I-
It's more illumination. Is it necessary for safety?
I'm going to say that if you go to an apartment building and you live there and you have people coming and going, that you are not in control and you have kids, I personally feel from experience that you want more light than less light. That's what I'm going to say. Regardless if you are, that's my personal experience, my applied personal experience.
And I also, also think, Daryl, it seems that each time there's a variance requested, it all models on that same problem, meaning the minimum, average, the maximum average. They just spread too far. The low and the minimum and maximum are too far apart. And when you try to get in the middle, it just, I can think of three, excuse me, I'm thinking of three just sitting here, that we've had in the last couple of years, they've had that same issue. If you were to take away the maximum average, every developer would be able to meet it because they can meet the minimum at the property lines, they can meet the maximum in the center. For some reason, and, you know, Andrew can, should chime in too, but it seems like at SAT 1 is the issue that we can't meet. It seems to be that's the, every time we have a variance come in, it's because they can't meet that average maximum. Maybe we need to look at just that in the ordinance and see if we, what was supplied was right.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's a mystery to me how that gets calculated.
But in all due respect, and I don't want to take this out of context, but I think when developers do project, they look at, there's a budget, and that's a very important part. And a lot of time, if you talk about lighting, they try to do things, raise it as much as possible so that you can spread it as much as possible, and trying to pay the least amount of money. So I'm not saying this is the case today, but I'm saying that a lot of time, things that are driving the lighting plan is a budget issue, and that's what we, they talk about to us at TRT. So I think these two things have to be balanced together, not just, you know, is it truly an illumination issue, or is there other things underlying it? I think that the ordinance that we have is a solid ordinance that was developed by highly capable and knowledgeable and people that work explicitly in the field of lighting, by lighting engineers. So I have to ask, where's the disconnect? I'm not, I'm also not gonna say that it's perfect, I'm not gonna say that it can't be improved.
So this is the question that I'm struggling with. If I am outside the boundaries of what's established here in the ordinance, am I unsafe? Am I gonna go draw chalk marks on the ground where some incident happened because I didn't meet this lighting standard? I mean, that's really what the board is tasked with doing. And when you ask for a waiver, we have to consider that.
No, I understand what you're saying.
And, and so with your testimony and this evidence and this alternate sort of standard, you know, the assertion is, yes, it is safe, it is acceptable, it does meet an alternate standard. And where do you, where do you draw that line?
Well, the question is, yes, it's an alternate standard, is it adequate? I can draw up the standard at any time.
Well, I look at the source of the standard.
I understand.
And that's what I'm trying to judge here.
But do remember that they have a particular outlook. And their outlook is to reduce the amount of light that's reflected.
Yeah.
And a safety stand, but looking at it from a safety point of view with dealing with people of all ages and light sensitivities, you're at odds because older people, who may well live in an apartment building, often need more light for them to be safe and to find those keys that were dropped.
And I can understand that, at the Moore School and that installation that we did.
Even in a residential setting, I would suggest that we have our ordinance, it gives certain standards.
Okay.
The applicant can meet those standards, and therefore there is no justification in yet another waiver. So there, a different opinion.
Yeah, okay. I hear what you're saying.
Hand it to the side. I'm perfectly willing to sit here all night.
Ouch.
Let's be honest, we had, within a past year or so, in that area, I can't recall if there was a waiver granted or not.
There was, for Mulder remediation?
Yes, and, and from the block, driving by, that is a very bright site. And I cannot recall if there was a waiver granted for that site, or if it met-
There was. Did he ever change those lights up?
They're still, they're in the process. I think someone has changed them.
Because the lights were not full cutoff installed.
Right, they didn't put the right lights in. Andrew designed it with the right lights, they didn't put the right ones in.
But maybe that would be a good, once the correct fixtures are in place, to measure that. Because that was in similar setting to this application to review that, but-
But how they was installed is completely the opposite of what is, that was presented and approved by the board.
I understand that, but, but-
And we're holding up the CEO on that till that gets done. So I understand every day in a week, so they'll have it done.
I'm inclined, inclined to grant this waiver solely because we cannot quantify if our minimum standard is adequate or inadequate. So I think it, and that's, that's the stance I look at. And when we're saying that, from a safety standpoint, or from a light pollution, one thing that I always consider is the nearby neighbors. If I happen to be living next to that, in the ordinance it says point one foot candle light trespass onto them, that's what I'm sensitive to. I would hate to have had a dark environment where I'm living and then to have a very bright, a very drastic change to them. That's a factor to me.
Is there any adjacent properties, or what kind of lighting exists right now? Are there streetlights? Are there outdoor lighting?
John, are there any streetlights there?
Yeah, there's a few streetlights there. Chase at the Bangor Road.
All right. Do we want to make a motion separately? Well, I guess the waiver is a separate.
Yes, so if you do the waiver, you have to make sure that you do this compliant to 605.4.
I guess A, B, and C here because that was not discussed at all during the preliminary plan, is that correct? That was moved on to this meeting?
Waivers of six?
60, 605.4?
602.9?
Six, 605.4, B and C talks about how, what you need to meet when you need the waiver.
I have 602.9 waivers, submission requirements, criteria of performance and conditions, and waivers.
601 again, you guys have?
602.9.
Oh yeah, I was sleeping, I'm sorry. 602.9, B and C. Thank you, John. So those, that's the test that needs to be met.
Yeah, so we would, in this case, target specifically the average maximum, right? That's what you're?
You're exceeding the average maximum?
No, I'm less than the average maximum.
So be the average minimum you're concerned about.
Well, there's no average minimum. I, yeah.
Describe to me again the numbers that you have on your plan for active building entrance. Is it more than five?
No.
What candle?
No, it's, it's down at two.
Oh, so there's more than just the average?
There's, there's the average maximum, and then there's the active building entrance. I'm, I'm above the average maximum for walkways and sidewalks. I am above the average maximum in the parking lot. And I am below the average maximum at the active building entrance, and I am also below the maximum. Below the minimum. So, so, I mean. Again, I can, I can add that fixture at the active building entrance, I can bring it up to over five. Yeah, I can do that.
And what will happen with the average maximum? Will it still need to be?
The average maximum will still be out of range.
Okay.
But I will meet the min and I will meet the max.
All right, can we compromise? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Let's, we'll entertain sort of an average maximum kinda waiver?
Yeah.
And then you'll agree to bring those active building entrance minimums up to five?
Yes.
With some extra fixtures?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, with regard to the...
This is a public, has a public hearing then how?
That's true. Yes, this is a public hearing, anyone may comment upon this matter. If you wish to do so, please be recognized by the chair and then go up to the lectern and state your name for the record and then tell us your comment. Does anyone wish to speak? In that case, I shall close the public hearing. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the applicant's request for a waiver to the lighting standards, we make the motion that we accept the applicant's inclusion of additional fixtures to meet the minimum requirement at the active building entrance, that we allow the applicant to not meet the average maximum as, as requested. And our reasoning for that, under the 602.9 waiver section, that the dismodification will not adversely affect the landowners or the general health and safety and welfare of the city. And that waiving that particular standard is, does not nullify the intent or the purpose of this ordinance. And, but there are some conditions. And if you'll agree, some of, some of them involve you. One of them is, we would like to have you provide a complete copy of that dark sky ordinance for the city and the planning board members to review. We would also request that at some point when the installation is complete, we are allowed to have some access to go out there and make some measurements, to sort of, you know, look at what the lighting plan is, not for the purpose of revising your plan, but just to understand what we got. What, you know, what does it mean, an, an average maximum? You know, find these points and make some measurements, if that's okay with you. I would ask the city that this particular project be added to the list of projects that we have granted lighting waivers for, to continue to build that record of why and why. And then the last part, it might be a separate motion, Mr. Chairman, you have to tell me if this is out of bounds. I want them to, I want the city to add to the lighting ordinance that in the lighting plan, applicants depict areas of non-conformity.
I think that's a separate.
Okay, so we'll make that.
It really doesn't have anything to do with this application.
We'll retract that last one, so it's the copy of the ordinance, allow us to step onto the property once the lighting's done, add this to the list that we're gonna review on this, and that we grant that waiver. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate. Are you ready to go home and go to sleep now?
Mr. Chairman.
We need to deal with the fine, with the whole thing.
I would like to interject in the middle of this, in a subsidiary sort of off the chute motion about the city ordinance.
Okay.
I make a motion that we, in the lighting standard section, we make a requirement that the applicants on the lighting plan depict areas of non-conformity, so that we can find those, evaluate them. That's my, that's my motion, for alteration of the ordinance.
Well, to alter the ordinance, the city council has to approve that.
Okay, so a proposed alteration.
You would need exact language for that.
We have a motion to give direction to staff to work on this, to get this back.
Yes, I think, I think it's better if it's a request to staff to work on.
Okay, yeah, so I would revise the motion to be a request to staff to work on something right along those lines, help us identify where these issue areas are.
Now, let me ask, since this has not gotten a second. Do we need an actual motion or can staff take this as a direction the planning board would like them to go in?
It has to be on the record.
Okay, all right.
I feel like.
All right, all right, I won't, I won't fight you, honor.
I'll second it then.
Okay. So any discussion? All in favor, please?
So, I have a question. So you guys took, actually I'm back on Andrew's project, you guys took action on the waiver, did you take action to make a final approval though?
No, 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 no.
No, no, we, we just took a little detour for a second.
I'm still here.
Okay, I thought we were like done, I was a bit like.
I'm still here.
Okay.
Take all my notes before I can.
Okay, I'm good.
Yeah, we, the project is complete, we dealt with that, and now we have a waiver request, and so what we need to determine is whether the submissions are, meet the requirements of the ordinance, we have the submissions, but are they okay? And that's the last bit.
So, yeah, that would be the question for the board then, are there any other items about the application other than this lighting thing that we've tortured Andrew with?
Keeps him awake.
Is there anything else that you wanna bring up? Any concerns that you had about the project? Is there, there's a TRC's?
Yeah, the other thing with the TRT about the road, they give the permission for the assessment.
That, that has been, yeah.
The DOT permit, that's the only thing I had in my notes. Is that what you're referring to? There was a DOT permit change, is that?
There is, I believe that was in the application.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We did change it from the storage to in residential units.
Sorry, bro. I thought I had it on off. Actually, I do have it on off.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so then, Mr. Chairman, with regard to our agenda item number one, the final plan for a major use site development, plan and subdivision entitled Stone Park Properties, if the planning board finds that this meets the section, 607 standards and criteria, Article eight, Article nine, Article 10, Article 11, with the addition, with the note of the waiver that's already been granted due to the circumstances of this project. The conditions, the conditions and waivers will be shown on the final plan. And we approve the project.
Do you have Article seven there? Subdivision?
Article seven should be part of that motion, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's an approved use, too?
Yeah, I believe we made that determination for preliminary, that it was an allowed use. So that is the motion.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please?
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for that.
And be careful with your lungs. Unless there was objection, I would like to call for a five-minute recess.
No objections?
Okay, we stand recessed for five minutes. Are we all here? In that case, we're back in session. So last go through on this, at the February 3rd meeting, planning board had made the determination that the applicant was, the application was complete, and now we just need to make a finding that it meets the requirements of the ordinance. Go ahead.
My name is Alina Watt, I'm with HEDFINE Engineering and Design, and we're working with the City of Ellsworth to work on the design and permitting of the Forest Avenue Extension Project, which also includes modifications to the existing high school entrance drive. The new main access drive to the high school will be at the end of the proposed extension. The project will be done in planned coordination with the DOT renovations of State Street, and will include a signalized railroad crossing and other renovations.
I have a question. You have the little spur into EBS. Why is that? Well, in other words, why at public expenses there are a, an additional entrance to a private concern?
Well, EBS has been working with the city in order to accomplish this project. In fact, there has been a transfer of land from EBS to the city in order to locate the intersection where it is. And I'm not, I wasn't privy to the exact negotiations that included the, you know, the access drive from EBS, the driveway from EBS to the Forest Avenue Extension, but I'm sure that it was all part of the discussions years ago.
So we may reasonably conclude that this is a benefit to the citizens of Ellsworth and to the business involved?
Yes.
Okay, because I just wanted that on record in case anyone should ever.
Yeah, this will provide EBS with another access point to the new entrance road, I believe it's used primarily by the trucks, so it's a good thing, this will improve traffic in that entire area. And they are providing an easement, as Alina shared, to accommodate the alignment of the road, so it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you.
Didn't, didn't they also, they're proposing to close the existing entrance on?
They're closing a curb cut. EBS is closing a curb cut.
Okay.
That is the one that's used by trucks, too.
Yeah, and now they'll be going up, out around to the new access.
So they're gonna, they're gonna clear out that, wherever that right turn lane is, there's gonna be no stuff coming out onto?
So it's a traffic improvement for everyone?
Yeah, it feels more like a train.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I just wanted that on record, and it certainly improves traffic safety because the trucks will be exiting on, at a controlled intersection and entering as well. Okay. Now, are there further questions for the applicant?
Can you describe more about the existing road, what's gonna become of that? How wide is that gonna remain going into the parking lot, and if you can go that direction and cross those tracks that are there now?
Absolutely. So you're referring to the existing high school entrance?
Yeah.
So what, what is being proposed is that the existing entrance drive be narrowed to an 11-foot wide sidewalk essentially for pedestrian access only.
Where is that? Can you show me where this 11 feet is? That starts at the road?
It's from here, no. This is the existing high school entrance drive on State Street. This is remaining, it's going to turn into access for the athletic fields that are on the lower portion of the site.
Okay.
The athletic fields are over here. So cars will be able to access the parking lots and everything right in this area on this side of the railroad tracks. This is the current main access drive to the high school from this bend until just past the railroad tracks. It's going to be narrowed and turned into just pedestrian access so students from the school can come down and walk to the athletic fields below. There will be, there's an existing fence right there, there's gonna be a gate installed that will be two six-foot wide sliding gates or swinging gates that can be opened or shut depending on the seasonal railroad crossing. I believe the intent is that perhaps one of the gates will be opened during school hours so that there'll be a six-foot wide opening allowing students to go through, but the whole intent is to keep vehicles from traveling on this portion right here.
What is, so where your thumb just was on that curve, what is, what does that look like to somebody that's coming in up that road thinking that, oh, I can get to the high school and stuff like that? What have they encountered there?
Sure. Well, I mean, there's a sidewalk that runs along the side of the driveway, there's gonna be a curb cut at this point, and it will look like a wide sidewalk. There are some detectable warning papers here. I know that there has been some discussion about installing some removable bollards really similar to what is currently up at the DOT trail right here. So that is something that we would certainly consider including on the final plan, are bollards that could essentially be taken off in case an emergency vehicle needed to access, because this is wide enough for an emergency vehicle to travel through if necessary. So if, if that is something that the city thinks, feels would be important in order to really, you know, deter vehicles from accidentally coming up this road, we can do that. you know, deter vehicles from accidentally coming up this road, we can do that.
What about signage on the, on that, you know, old used road? Is there going to be anything that shows, like down by the road, you know, access to athletic field parking lot only? Or something that says, this is not the access, is the high school turnaround now? And the reason I think of this is because there have been changes in town to certain roads that I've gone to and done the exact wrong thing. Because, you know, I know that it's there, but I don't remember, it's a habit. I've turned left on some things I shouldn't be turning left on, and I'm, I'm thinking of other people that don't access the high school consistently.
Sure.
Clearly, parents, you know, people that are there all the time, are going to catch on pretty quick, but I'm thinking about a person that, you know, goes down there once a year for an event. What is their indication that they might need to go up to that parking lot and turn
The high school signage, I believe is remaining where it is. I'm, I'm not sure what the plan is for, that the high school has in place as far as redirecting traffic that way. I know one very big visual cue will be the fact that this is no longer going to be a signalized intersection, the traffic light is going to be moved up there by DOT. That will be a pretty big clue to people at least coming down, trying to take a left-hand turn, that it'd be easier for them to go off the actual main entrance drive. But as far as high school signage, we don't have any particular signage indicating a change of route.
Okay.
Involved in this, in, you know, the actual construction of the Forest Avenue Extension itself.
Would the city entertain some sort of temporary signage, you know, that stays there for eight months, or something like that, that redirects people as soon as they turn, so that they don't get to that curve, thinking they can go?
Can the owner of the project respond to that comment?
Yes, please.
I'll refer to the planning department on that.
I don't believe we have a signage plan at this point, but obviously, you know, as the project comes online, which will probably be, you know, could be the fall of 2017, we're going to need, obviously, direct people to the main entrance, and I suspect there will be a sign at the old entrance that will say, you know, not a through way, or parking ball fields only, or some, but yes, we're going to have to deal with it. But I don't know specifically yet, but, yes. But again, we don't have a plan at this point, but we will develop one.
Well, you could just have a sign that says confused, see the city now.
You mentioned something about the railroad tracks.
Yes.
And what, what, they're already there.
They're already there.
They're not moving.
Correct.
So what, what is it that's going to be changed or different, or?
Well, the, the Forest Avenue Extension is going to cross the railroad tracks, so there's going to be a signalized railroad crossing there with lights, flashing lights. It's already gone through a DOT permitting process, it's gone through a public hearing, it's been approved by the state, and it meets all the requirements for a railroad, a safe railroad crossing.
Is there a gate, a gated railroad crossing, or is it just the lights?
I believe it's the flashing, just the lights. There was talk about having those swinging gates down, those are maintenance intensive, and there's questions about their effectiveness, and in this instance, I believe that DOT has, they will, they are the ones who are actually going to be designing the actual lighting signage, so they will determine something that meets the state requirement.
And I would suggest it's an improvement over what we have now.
Right now, it's an uncontrolled crossing.
The railroad is under federal jurisdiction, the state is the owner, so this has to meet federal FRA standards for safety. So, and the state did hold a license public hearing here at City Hall earlier in the year, and the permit has been granted by the state following federal guidelines.
Thank you.
And the railroad line will remain seasonal, is that correct?
Yes. Unless the exterminator train decides to have winter trips or something, but as far as I know, it's summer. Yeah.
That is also outside the city's control.
That's true.
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Because it's a, it's a railroad, it comes under federal and state jurisdiction.
The state is the owner, and the federal government regulates it. In fact, some railroads have their own police, believe it or not, railroad police who have jurisdiction. But in this case, the state's worked very closely with the city as the owner, and I do want to commend the state, they are providing 90% of the funding for this railroad crossing, which we appreciate very much.
Are there, are there any issues with the, with the access up the new road versus the, that existing access? You mentioned being able to get emergency vehicles up there, does the, do you guys have any concerns about that, from a fire department perspective, or?
No, we've discussed it. The base of the road is probably going to be the same, in fact, it's going to be built up some, so as far as getting an emergency vehicle up through there shouldn't be an issue. Access through those gates is a matter of just stopping the vehicle and getting, moving the other gate and getting through, so it depends on what they're going to do as far as a bollard, as far as a removable bollard, what that is, that'll, I don't believe that will be an issue. We've discussed that.
Okay. And you mentioned there's no current plan for the, was this something you were discussing?
It was, it was mentioned in one of the discussions, as something that might be preferred to be installed.
Can you describe the retaining wall up in the, when you head up the road and you take that left, is there wetland up there in the northeast corner?
Yep, the retaining wall is there to keep the grading out of the wetland. This has been permitted through Natural Resources Protection Act, so there is a minimal, a certain amount of disturbance that we needed to adhere to, and the retaining wall is needed in order to keep us out of the wetlands in that area, which were considered wetlands of special significance by D E V. So that's the purpose for that there.
Is there maintenance included with that retaining wall, or?
It's going to be like a, probably a big block segmental retaining wall, similar to what you see on the sides of roads currently, so.
Jersey barrier?
Yeah, yeah, like those big block ones, like the ones that are going up Bridge Hills, or like, I mean, that's, I anticipate the actual block hasn't been determined yet, but that's a typical type, typical style.
That, that's not a Jersey barrier?
No, it's not a Jersey barrier.
It's fine.
Well, I just want to make sure people that listening, the Jersey barrier for me is that concrete section that you can put, you know, up and down, that divide? We're talking about a sectional integrated type of concrete blocks.
There is a guardrail that runs along the side of the road.
Experienced drivers going into the block.
Well, then, that's a B E P issue.
That's true.
That's very complicated. So what would the board like to do?
There were no really significant changes between what was presented and this plan?
Nope, there were no comments.
Did you happen to get an answer, Shell and lilacs? The garden club?
Yes, we did get an answer on the multi-stem lilacs.
Multi-stem, oh.
They're multi-stem lilacs, I could see it from the road. So there's a cluster of lilacs that were actually probably behind the house. Mickey Sumter called Chad from Atlantic Landscape to go take a look, and he took a look, and his response, it looks like the, and I don't want to, okay, from what I hear and understand, I don't want to see his response and put him on the, on line here. The lilacs were probably planted at the same time the house was there, for they're very old lilacs with extensive root system. To dig those out is probably an expensive and much bigger undertaking, that it appears, so it'd be probably cheaper to plant new lilac. It doesn't mean if someone did not want to go and dig those lilac, that they couldn't meet with us and we could see what we could do about it. But at this point, I think the city's probably not going to move this lilac.
I will pass that information.
But, you know, maybe there's something we could see we could, we could do, I'm learning, if someone wanted to, you know, try to go get them. But I think right at this point, it's too, it's cost prohibitive to try to save the lilacs. I don't know if they're going to move either, I don't think they're going to be touched either.
I didn't think, I don't live very far from that, and I, I walk, so I'm very interested in that. But I went and looked at them, and I don't think they're in very good shape. I mean, they maybe have a great root system, but the, the growth part is not in good shape.
So can we put you on record, saying that the lilac was not in good shape? That would be great.
Well, I, it's, it's part of the recorded record, and I'm sure it could appear in the records.
I think it is.
So, but we, I think also that the lilacs are not going to be touched by that project, am I correct? So they're going to flourish and flower for several more years, hopefully.
That's wonderful, that's a great solution.
Correct, and you can go cut some if you want to.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome. We aim to please.
I will pass that information on.
Is our traditional motion maker prepared?
Mr. Chairman, with.
Public hearing?
Public hearing, oh, right. There seems to be almost no public hearings. This is a public hearing, does anyone wish to comment upon this application? I'll give it a half hour. Hearing not, and I pause the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the final plan for major use site development plan entitled Forest Avenue, agenda item number three, the proposal to create a new four-way intersection. It will serve as main entrance to the Ellsworth High School and provide access to adjacent EBS building. I make a motion that the planning board finds that this project meets section six oh seven standards and criteria, and as applicable, Article eight, performance standards, street design and construction standards, stormwater management, construction standards, and parking standards, with no waiver modifications. With the only condition that the city can center some sort of redirection signage at the old entrance way to help people navigate, and that we approve this project.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make our motion that we include the signing of the my lines at the end.
What did you just say?
That we include the, as an additional item for agenda, signing of my.
Well, you know, we could adjourn and then sign the my lines before walking out.
So move.
So a motion to adjourn. I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.